I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, my name is Roger Birdell and I am the town moderator. Could you explain the rules that allow to conduct our physical visit at this meeting? No one may speak unless they have called or asked. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait until I call you, and then come forward to the microphone. We have one on each side here, and if you're in the back, we have a couple of gentlemen with microphones that will bring to you all day if you speak from back there. Once you do reach the microphone, please begin by identifying yourself by name and tell us who you are. Ordinary day will not allow someone to speak more than once on an issue, and may place limits on how long someone may speak on one topic. If there are times when any of you wish to address a question to another speaker or to one of our officials, you must do so through me, and then I will call on the appropriate person to respond to your question. I will allow persons who are not registered voters to speak, but please remember that only registered voters can make motions, second motions, or voting motions. Don't be afraid to ask questions if you don't understand something. Speak your mind freely, but please remember that we can disagree without being disagreeable. Please listen respectfully to other people speaking. Those of you who attended our special town meeting in November may recall there were towns during that meeting where some people were disruptive. If you don't anticipate that, you will have a repeat of that type of disruptive behavior, but in case it does recur, I want you all to be aware of Massachusetts law, which is chapter thirty-nine, section seventeen, a law which deals with disorderly behavior at a town meeting, as it is called in the book. No person shall address a town meeting without meeting with the moderator. All persons shall, at the request of the moderator, be silent. If the person, after warning from the moderator, persists in disorderly conduct and disorderly behavior, the moderator may order him to withdraw from the meeting, and if he does not withdraw, they order the constable or any other person to remove him and confine him in some convenient place till the meeting is adjourned. I don't continue to say anything more like that. Please turn off your cell phones and put them on silent unless you are the first responder. I invite anyone who intends to make a motion, please come up onto this stage here and speak from the podium so people will be able to hear you. If someone wishes to make a motion to amend a pending motion, I will only accept that motion in writing unless it involves a very small change in few words. Otherwise, if you want to move to substantially amend your pending motion, I ask for please see the town council prior to applying these instructions. If this is the fourth or help you put your motion into writing to a form that you will be able to act upon, and that's going to take a certain amount of time, and they just suspend discussion on that article, we'll want you to otherwise go ahead and ask them to come back. All right, now each of you, or each registered voter has given a clicker when you came in, and these have been loaned to a private friend in Brooklyn, so please remember to return it to the registration table before you leave. Each clicker has a button for yes, no, or abstain. Now, when you're ready, we are ready to vote. I will say vote now, and you will have ten seconds to push the button. If you push the wrong button, you can change your mind within those ten seconds if you press the incorrect button. I will warn you when our five seconds run. When time has expired, I will say the voting is closed. The computer will then take the two seconds to tabulate the results, and I will announce the number of votes for or against the motion, and declare whether the vote motion passed or not. I admit in form that the system does not make a record or power to continue the process of voting. Before we start, I'm going to ask the test question to give you all a chance to practice. You ready? Should the Red Sox trade a guy because of this? Yes or no? Ready? Five seconds. Voting is closed. Yes, fifty-two, no, eighty-eight, fifty, say, fifty-three. Well, I guess you should tell the Red Sox manager that. Okay, thank you very much. All right, down to business. This is the annual town meeting of the town of Paxton being held on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The return of the warrant for the annual town meeting shows that it has been properly It begins with Article one, which is an article regarding updating and replacing zoning bylaws. I call upon Mr. Baggers for the moment.
Good evening. I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by replacing all existing sections except use regulations with the updated versions titled "Zoning Bylaw Update," dated June third, two thousand twenty-five, which is on file at the town clerk's office and available on the town's website homepage, which shall include revisions to definitions, district regulations, special permits, and any other applicable sections, thereby replacing the current zoning bylaw in their entirety, except for the provisions related to accessory glove units, also known as ABDU.
Is there a second? Thank you. The motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approve, is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval. Is there any discussion? There is any discussion? This motion? Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone, tell us who you are, wait a minute.
Brigham Road, Bob Ferguson, thirty-eight Brigham Road. I just would like to know what we're voting on. What, you know, tell us, tell us what the change is, what is this zoning law? We don't all go to all the select board meetings.
Okay, so, to be brief, we're bringing this motion for this art of law. It's not changing anything. All we're doing is reorganizing. We're making it easier for anybody with business before the town pertaining to something for the planning board or the zoning board, and specifically for the people involved in the town and taking applications and things like that, to have the information a little clearer from the beginning of those processes. As I mentioned in the article, the definitions in current set of the zoning bylaw, definitions are under each section. What we've done is we've consolidated all of the definitions under the definitions section. It's just administrative things to clean things up and make it easier for the process to take place. Are you comfortable with that? Okay, so, can I mention?
Any other questions or comments? They say none will proceed to vote. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. Ready? And voting, please, done. The vote was one hundred thirty-four yes, twenty-seven no, I think that this motion is passed by one and two-thirds of the majority. Now we're going to go on to Article two, which is also about zoning bylaws, and again I call upon Mr. Baggers, who is chairman of the planning board. Is there any motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws by replacing section three, which is the use regulations, with the updated version attached to the warrant, which shall include revisions to definitions, use regulations, district regulations, special permits, and any other applicable sections.
Is there a second? Motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval. Is there any discussion or questions? I see none. We'll move on to the vote. This vote also requires a two-thirds majority. Are you ready? And voting is closed. The guesses, one hundred thirty-four yes, twenty-nine no, or abstentions, I think that this motion is passed by two-thirds of the majority. All right, now we're on to Article three, which is the annual vote we have to authorize funds for highways. Is there a motion? Just to vote now.
I move that the town vote to accept any funds to be allocated by the common law under optimization of chapter ninety of the Massachusetts general laws pertaining to highway funds, to authorize the select board to enter into contracts for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads, and to authorize the town treasurer to borrow in anticipation of receipt of said funds. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the director of public works.
Mr. Vogan, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Is there any discussion? I see none. We'll move on to the vote. This vote requires a simple majority. Ready? And voting is closed. And the vote total is one hundred fifty-seven yes, no, nine, no, and one abstention, I think that this motion is passed. Article four, which is an article to repurpose some money from one use to another use, is being voted on by the select board.
I move that the town vote to repurpose the remaining funds of fifteen thousand dollars previously appropriated under Article five of the May two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting for the purpose of contracting with a consultant to assist in the town administrator search.
Is there a second? Okay, motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Moderator.
If I speak up, can you hear me?
I'm not sure. We have people who sit here in the issues of physical hearing.
Huh? Glenn Sullivan, Brigham Road. I was just wondering, why don't we use like a D or Monster? That's not something that's really must have been a dollar? I don't hire anyone, but.
So, the last time we hired a town administrator, we did go through a, there's a couple of different ways you can go about doing it, but we did go through of having a screening committee here in town in order to tear down the applicants, and then we interviewed the three remaining applicants in the public session. The reason that we do it that way, or that there's a screening committee at all, or some kind of screening method before that, is because otherwise we have to interview everybody in public session, and that would reduce the number of applicants we have because people have current jobs, and so they don't necessarily want their current employers to know that they're applying for a new job. There's, you can go through a screening committee, which we tried the last time, or you could go through a consultant, and I think that there were a lot of people who spoke up the last time around who wanted to do the consultant, and partly the reason for that is this is a highly specialized or professional position, and so a consultant would be better apt to put forward candidates that are going to meet certain criteria that are necessary throughout town.
Any other questions or comments?
They voted seventy-two grocery. Why do we have to pay somebody fifteen thousand dollars to check these people out? Because they don't want to be acknowledged that they're looking for another job? That's their problem. Now, if we look at the money at all times, why would we pay?
Is that a question you want answered or just a comment? You've got, there was a question. Okay, Julie, you want to respond to that?
I think I would just reiterate my answer to the prior question, that this is a highly specialized position, and so as a select board, we are selective officials that aren't necessarily administrable. A lot of us used to be a town administrator, and it would be better in many cases for somebody who has a better understanding of the qualifications necessary to do that job, to vet these people.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Hi, Glenn Sullivan, ninety-two, Richard Zav. As a member of the last town administrator select, selection committee, or recommendation committee, we had a bunch of people who were very passionate about trying to find the best town administrator in town, but we did not have the resources that, or the knowledge that I think that we necessarily needed as individuals. We were people who were passionate about the town of Paxton, and we believed that we put together the three best candidates, and they went forward through the process. I don't know that I was any better to do it, and I think that probably somebody who knows a lot more about this knows more about how to choose a town administrator for our particular environment than anybody that was on the committee before. The other question that one of my family members asked, and I'll put it forward, what was the article that the fifteen thousand dollars was originally allocated towards? Does anybody remember?
Heather knows. What a surprise.
Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, town administrator. So previously, in May of two thousand twenty-four, we had repurposed an article for the first time, and this is the second. So initially, we had money for a town-wide phone system, and then we switched over. Instead of having the traditional lines, we went to a VoIP system, which left us about fifteen thousand and change left. Last year, we had appropriated this at annual town meeting for the purposes of upgrading our networking equipment and our Wi-Fi throughout the town offices, but subsequent to this appropriation, we actually received an earmark for fifty thousand dollars, which made this no longer necessary, so we were able to carry this, these funds forward, and this is the decision the select board made of how to reappropriate it.
Okay, thank you. So, given that this was originally allocated for town infrastructure, I can't think of a better place to put infrastructure into a town administrator selection health committee,
If there is a common question on this, I'll answer. Okay, is there anybody? This requires a simple majority, all those who favor, or yes, we vote now. Or vote no. And voting is closed. One hundred thirty-six, yes, twenty-seven, no, zero abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Okay, Article five, another repurposing, article having to do with the DPW, and this calls Mr. Vogan, the chair president of the select board.
I move that the town vote to repurpose the remaining funds of thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars previously appropriated under Article eleven of the May two thousand nineteen annual town meeting for the purpose of DPW building slash office related work.
Thank you, Mr. Vogan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. And tell us again what you have to add to that.
Bob Ferguson, thirty-eight Brigham Road. What will you spend the money on instead?
Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, town administrator. So, the initial appropriation of this money was actually for our DPW feasibility study a few years ago. We are currently trying to make some headway on our DPW facilities, both the current garage as well as some administrative offices. Those who might be following along with the select board meetings or even checking out our website, we've gone, we've been able to secure a two-hundred-thousand-dollar earmark to assist with the DPW building, and we were able to get approval to use some of those funds on converting the existing snack shack slash storage area at the Klingley Building into DPW administrative offices, as well as updating the septic system for the current and future building location of the DPW. These funds that were previously appropriated for the DPW would go to further those purposes. So, even putting all of that money into those two things, there'll still be additional things that we need to secure for the location of the Klingley Building. We still need a sign, we still need some money for drainage work, and a few other pieces. So it will go back into essentially making better working conditions for the DPW employees and also taking care of our facilities. Anything that's left, the goal is to put, we constantly have things breaking over at the DPW building itself, garage doors that don't shut, things that are falling off the walls, so being able to repair what we currently have with those funds.
Is there any other questions or comments? They say none. We'll proceed to vote. This vote requires a simple majority. Please vote now. Five seconds. Voting is closed. Yes, votes, one hundred eighty-four, no, eleven, zero abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Okay, we move on to Article six, which is the annual motion we have regarding revolting revolving fund expenditures, this is the majority.
I move that the town vote to set the annual expenditure limits for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for all revolving funds established under the general bylaws as set forth below. House lawn aging, two thousand dollars, recreation, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, accident aid, five thousand dollars, town mycloths and leases, four thousand dollars, planning board, twenty thousand dollars, library, five thousand dollars, and conservation commission, two thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second? Not yet. Motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, this vote requires a simple majority. Five seconds. Voting is closed. This motion, the votes, one hundred thirty-five, yes, twenty, no, two abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Moving on to Article seven, which is the annual vote we have under water, the water department. That's the motion of Article seven. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate through water department receipts, water fees, or water charges, or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to operate the water enterprise as follows. Compensation, two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars. Expenses, one million eight one thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Debt, one hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars, for a total of one million five hundred eleven thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars. And that one million five hundred eleven thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars is raised as follows. Department receipts, one million five hundred eleven thousand eight hundred forty-eight Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made a second. The position, recommendation of the select board, approval. Recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Is there any discussion? I see none. We'll proceed to vote. This is a simple majority vote. Please vote now. Five seconds. And voting is closed. This motion, the vote, is one hundred forty-six, yes, fifty, no, five abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Article eight, that's in with the water track tank maintenance, again, an annual motion in advance, is the motion that I have to make, is pretty clear.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from retained earnings of the water enterprise fund, the sum of twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars or any other sum, to pay for the inspection, maintenance, repair, or modification of the Asimov Skate Road's water storage tank, in accordance with the seventh year of the existing contract with Veolia, formerly known as Suez and Gas Solutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made a second. Recommendation of the select board, approval. Is for approval. The recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Is there any discussion? Let's see, this vote requires a simple majority. Ready? Five seconds. And voting is closed. And this article, the vote was one hundred fifty, yes, five, no, three abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Article nine, which is the MS four enterprise, the motion of Article nine.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate through MS four department receipts or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to operate the MS four enterprise as follows. Compensation, zero dollars. Expenses, one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars, for a total of one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And that one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars is raised as follows. Department receipts, one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll read the issue, planning board, recommendations, select board.
Is for approval.
Is for approval. Recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Okay, and is there any discussion?
Glenn Sullivan, ninety-two, Richard Zav. What's MS four? I know it's self-funded, but what's MS four?
I don't understand that. I thought it was like a body agency.
Yeah, it's MI six, MS four, what is it?
It's because I have it in writing. Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, town administrator, stands for municipal separate storm sewer system.
Okay, all right.
So it's also anyone who has a handout under Article nine in the explanation packet piece.
Okay, I guess I didn't read far enough. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, all right, any other questions or discussion? Okay. Oh, yes, sir. Hold on. Wait.
Glenn Sullivan, Brigham Road. I believe Mr. Tebow had mentioned that we'd be fined for stormwater building that break. Was it twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or was it, or was it? Okay, I was going to say, twenty-five thousand dollars. No.
Evening, Travis Tebow, Paxton DPW superintendent. To answer your question, the DEP and/or the EPA has the ability to fine up to twenty-five thousand dollars per day. To date, they're not fining any towns that I'm aware of, but that's, that's how they have it written currently.
Any other questions or comments on this? My district requires a simple majority. Vote now. Five seconds. Voting is closed. This article, the vote's on one hundred forty-one, yes, ten, no, three abstentions, I think that this motion is passed. Article ten is the annual article to appropriate funds for road improvement, is being read.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the road improvements stabilization fund.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made a second. The recommendation of the select board, approval. Recommendation of the finance committee, approval. Is for approval. Any discussion? recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval, is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Article 72, is there any plan on streets? Which streets you going to do? Mr. Tebow.
Evening Travis Tebow, Paxton DPW Director. So this summer, we are working on Elizabeth, Mary Lane, and Center Drive in Highland.
Don Deprey, 65 Richards Avenue, does this include tree removal along town roads, the trees with the orange X's on them? Mr. Tebow.
At this time, it does not, so we do have the ability to take down some trees on road projects that we have throughout town when we're doing those projects. Unfortunately, we're extremely limited on our funds, so tree removal at this time is extremely limited.
Any other questions? Okay, this article requires a simple majority vote, get ready to vote now. Five seconds. And voting is closed. And this vote, the vote was 136, yes, 15, no, zero abstentions, that is clear, this motion is passed. And now Article 11 deals with the same funds for road improvement, I take this, I'm going to take them on, this is the vote. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $124,887 for the Road Improvement Stabilization Fund for the purpose of re-servicing roads. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and recommendation of the select board, approval, is for approval, the recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval, is there any discussion? Okay, this vote requires a simple majority vote, get ready to vote now. Five seconds. Voting is closed. This motion, the vote was 149, yay, yes, 10, no, and zero abstentions, that is clear, this motion is passed. Okay, on Article 12, which involves transferring money to the capital depreciation fund for the library, this is the majority.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the capital depreciation fund, the sum of $5,000 to be used toward the library HVAC project.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion has been made in second, and recommendation of the select board, approval, is for approval, the recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval, the recommendation of the capital improvement, approval, is for approval, is there any discussion? Yes, right over there.
Sarah 4299 Richards Ave., I'm in support of this article, I'm just curious if we have a fund for this, for maintaining the building, just curious why we're not using all of the money from that fund.
Mr. Speaker there? Ms. Monroe.
Mr. Moderator Heather Monroe, Town Administrator. So there was discussion in the Capitol Committee meeting when this came up, those videos are all on the website, online, if anyone wants to go back and watch them, either on YouTube or the Capitol page on the FY26 budget page. So the total cost of the project was about $20,000, give or take. This is for the HVAC control system. A couple of years ago, the library had to replace the boilers, they were able to pull those funds out of the library trust funds for the building to use for that purpose. I think when this was brought up before Capitol, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that the library has been taking care of a lot of their own building pieces over time, and they've also been good team players with other things when it came to finances, and that this was kind of a partnership where the library was using the majority of the funds of the project to come from the library trust funds, and then the town was only kicking in about a quarter of the cost, being about $5,000 for that.
Thank you, any other questions? Is that, get ready, Mr. Robinson, this vote requires a simple majority, get ready and Five seconds. Voting is closed. This vote, the vote was 142, yes, 17, no, zero abstentions, that is clear, this vote is passed. Another capital article now for regarding the Paxton Center School boiler, is the motion under Article 13. I move that the town vote to transfer from the capital depreciation fund, the sum of $67,000 for the replacement of a boiler at Paxton Center School. Thank you, is there a second? Motion has been made in second, and the recommendation of the select board, approval, recommendation of the finance committee, approval, recommendation of the capital improvement committee, approval, okay, any discussion? Okay, this vote requires a simple majority, get ready and vote now. Five seconds. And this vote is closed. This motion was 145, yes, 13, no, two abstentions, that is clear, and the motion under Article 13 is passed. Okay, Article 14 has to do with another capital expenditure for two police vehicles, is the motion under Article 14, this is the majority.
I move that we take no action on Article 14.
That motion, Article 14, is a, is a motion to move on Article 14. There's no motion to not act. Yes, here's the thing, folks, if there's a motion, an article, there's no motion made under it, then nothing happens. So let's move to the motion now, and declare that no action is taken under Article 14. Okay, let the record show that there were no motions made under Article 14, no action is taken.
Has anyone else made a motion?
Yep.
I made a motion, fire. That might be so, fire.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Right, motion has been made in second, and then we buy, what, two vehicles, these two vehicles?
Yeah. Why would you do?
All right, is there a recommendation? Just for the recommendation, do you need to know the name?
Provost 72.
Provost, thank you. All right, Mr. Provost, you've been, hold on, let's think about this, okay, I need to know the recommendation, the select board has this motion.
There is no recommendation.
No recommendation, okay, is there a recommendation of the finance committee? No recommendation, no recommendation, okay. So we have a motion, Mr. Provost, that we do this, and where's the money that comes from?
You're appropriating money all, like, whatever, spending.
Ask, ask me more specifically than that's.
You told me, you bring up that.
You need to tell us, it's your motion, you're asking a town to spend $90,000.
You don't have any problem spending all that alone, or?
Okay, hold on, Mr. Sullivan.
Glenn Sullivan, 92 Richards Ave., as much as I appreciate your enthusiasm, I don't think we can move at town meeting to spend $90,000 outright that was not previously discussed, previously put on a Warren article, previously considered by the finance committee, or recommended by anybody involved. If this comes to a vote, which I'm not sure how that can, I recommend this approval.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Colleen McGaw, he's up over. I don't understand the process, woman, that there's an article for Warren, towards a defeat, and then you take no action, I'm not following how that works.
So whenever there's an article for Warren, it just tells us that it's something we want to vote on, we don't want to vote on, and a motion has to be made on it, so the select board shows not to make a motion under this article, although one of the citizens has made a motion that is related to this article, who has to make a motion of the article exactly, but in my opinion, it's close enough to the actual article, Glenn, that it's not beyond the scope, I understand your point, I think it's, I think it's within the scope, so I will allow the motion to be made, yes, ma'am.
Colleen Sullivan, 92 Richards Ave., can you move to make no motion once a motion has been, oh, excuse me, move to make no action once the motion has been created?
Motion, motion to take no action is really, because I really want that motion obvious, what happens if the motion fails? Where are?
So you couldn't move to take no action now, now that it's already been?
If you don't like this motion, you can vote against it. I sit right here.
Carl, I'm 232 West Street. To the moderator, I'd like to ask if the select board can just tell us why you want to take no action.
Because of recent budget issues, we are no longer capable of uploading or outfitting our vehicles in-house, which means that they would have to be contracted out, which means ultimately, we can no longer produce police vehicles for the amount of money that's in the article. So since we can't, since we're not going to be able to do that, we're not going to find and outfit them, we felt that the best police chief is in consultation, please chief to not move the article.
Welcome in, by listening to the new motion, the laws are chucked up, you look at your girl, I might say the new motion is it's no longer leasing, it's buying, and do we have an amount where it's like we're buying two police cars outright, so that's not many dollars, but he needs to know how much police cars cost, I agree with you on that. Do we know the amount of the motion, I think is my question.
Mr. Provost, let's see, on the what do you want the town to spend this?
Whatever it takes.
I'm all, if you're more specific, people don't know exactly what you're asking them to do.
Whatever it takes to buy two cruises, I mean, do, do the math, figure it out, and bring it back, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, that's something to do in a town meeting, this person, you know, I don't know.
Do the research, figure out what it's going to cost, and bring it back to another meeting.
Is there a second, if there are any questions? The only question being is if we're cutting off the date, this requires a two-thirds majority.
Cut off the date.
Cut off the date, so the vote, yes, then you're voting to cut off the date, and move to a vote on this new motion. Okay, all those in favor of cutting off the date will vote yes, vote now. Okay, the vote, cut off the date, 147, yes, 10, no, two abstentions, so that means the date is ended, we're going to move, we're going to move on to the motion. So the motion is, if the town... Hold on, I want to help, I don't understand what you're saying, sir. You're saying the town, you want the town to spend whatever it takes to buy two police buses?
Research what this guy's made, and bring it to another meeting.
The afternoon, your motion's not a vote, it's not specific enough for the town to know that they're voting.
Okay, one, five minutes.
Sorry?
Start hot, five. Research what it's going to take, get two cruises, and bring it to a meeting.
Sir, your motion is not a vote, is there a motion under the existing Article 14? All right, and I, let the record show that direction's serving under Article 14, and move on to Article 15. Is, is Article 15 has to do with the spinning cap of the ambulance, is the motion under Article 15?
Good evening. I move that the town vote to authorize the select board quarters with Chapter 44, 721 C, of the Massachusetts General Laws to enter into a lease purchase by enhancing the agreement for the purpose of acquiring a new hand nose to replace hand nose one, and meet the emergency medical needs of the period with a total cost not to exceed $450,000, the term of such agreement not to exceed the useful life of the vehicle for seven years, as determined by the select board, subject to the future approval of an appropriation for the first year payment from the ambulance receipts reserved appropriation.
Chief, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the capital improvement committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, is, this is our R H D, and I'm going to have him speak to the board on why this motion is on.
Good evening, my community attorney, Town of Paxton, Fire Chief. We're looking to replace ambulance one, it is a 2015 Ford Ford ambulance, the average lifespan of an ambulance is five to seven years, this truck is now, it's 10 years, and we're looking to enter into a lease, so this will allow us to contract with the vendor to build the truck, and the truck will take about two and a half to three years to take delivery, this time we'll appropriate the object, you know, hospital seats, not taxpayer money, you know, to make the payments on this, once we build the truck.
Chief, anyone have any questions about this article or comments? All right, this article, because it involves, I mean, long-term.
Nick Schultz, 10 Brooks Road, just asked, asked a question. He was just confirming that the funds for the truck are coming from the ambulance receipts, which we get when we transport people from health insurance and not taxpayer funds.
Thank you. Okay, because this is a long-term lease situation, it requires a two-thirds majority, so get ready, listen to our questions, okay, get ready and vote now. And voting is closed. And this vote, the vote was 145, yes, 10, no, one abstention, that is clear, this vote is passed, and one and two years of the short. Now we reach out to 16, which is, they pass, they got the...
Not crying wolf.
This is sure, yeah? This is being assured, it's one of our presentations on the DAPF, the DAPF school, okay.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $652,973 to pay this assessed share of the DAPF Regional Location Technical School budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2025.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in second, and recommendation of the select board, approval, is for approval, the recommendation of the finance committee, approval, is for approval, and is there any discussion, questions? Okay, this vote requires a simple majority. Okay, this vote requires a simple majority. Get ready and vote now. Five seconds. And voting yes, close. And this article, the votes were 146, yes. 16, no, one extension, and if this motion is passed. We now move on to the Wachusett. Move to the project, and I call upon Scott Moxon, who's one of our representatives on the school committee.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,358,879 to pay assessed share for Wachusett Regional School District budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2025, thereby improve the district's budget for said fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a second? Motion to debate the second, the recommendation of the select board?
Approve it.
Is for approval, recommendation of finance committee?
Disapproval.
Is for disapproval. Any discussion?
Senator Calhoun, Senator Cressler Road. My question is, do we have a number of, uh, current student, what they're taking from us? Because we don't have any students that actually go to, uh, town out of the town to go to Wachusett and DAP. We have a number of great town commissioners receiving current student for us. Does it sound like we're sending kids to our...
So Superintendent Riley is here to answer that question. And just like to say before we start, like, this isn't just for Wachusett High School. This is the budget for Paxton Science School, Wachusett High School, the entire school district, all of our students. Do you know how these students exactly look like?
This is our superintendent, Riley, superintendent of all regional schools. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't have these up here, it's only first student. What I can tell you is you pay less first student to send your students to Wachusett High School, approximately $1,500 less than you do send them to DAP. And so one of the things that we have been trying to educate in the budget process is our cost per student are actually less. However, the amount of state funding we've got to support our students is considerably less as well. Unfortunately, this has been one of the matters that we've tried to concentrate on in our budget presentations. This over the past several years, our Chapter 7 funding has kind of hit a cliff. Two years ago, we had increases of two and a half million dollars. For the last two years, we get increases of $500,000 and $700,000. What's happened is each year, the cost of educating students has fallen disproportionately or more on our towns. And it's one of the things that we're advocating very hard to change at the state level. We're trying to make sure, and we care deeply about all the students who be educated. But in order for us to continue doing that, we need to have funding that is not going to be to teacher costs. One of the things that's unknown of the Wachusett budget is our level of teachers is actually far less than the state average. We could hire 100 teachers in Wachusett, and we still would be below the state average. And so it is not a case of us trying to increase money irresponsibly. It is trying to get to improve the services to our students, and also get to a level where we think of the zones for our home.
Do you have a question?
Jeremy Richard, A. Birchwood wrote, Superintendent Riley, over the last 10 years, you've seen your enrollment drop 68%. Yet your budget this year is increased to Paxton almost 8%. If you're not spending on the kids, what are you spending this money on?
I think Jeremy, we are spending on the kids. If you look at, and all of our information is available on the website, and we've given presentations that I have, I've explained also to the select board. Again, when you look at us in comparison to other districts and in comparison to the state, we have far lower numbers of administrators, teachers, guidance staff. And so the case is, is we've never been flush with staff. We have happened. And I mean, you know, some of the work that we're really concentrating on in the, in the district is to increase our enrollment numbers. We have seen a decline at high school. And one of the things that you'll see us do and work on in the next couple of years is looking at what we call pathways at the high school. So opportunities for students who aren't interested in the traditional academic venues. And so trying to have opportunities for kids who are interested in things other than their typical academic courses. It's one of the reasons why the vocational schools are very popular right now. They also have a lot of opportunities to provide their learning. We're trying to work to have those types of opportunities at the high school. This is my third year in the district, so it's hard for me to talk about historically what's happened here. I am confident, you know, and if at any time the Town of Paxton is interested in me coming and speaking about our strategic plan and the things we are working on, I'd be more inclined to do it. I didn't come with a presentation tonight because I honestly wanted to be respectful of people's habits. But I am more than willing to share the work we are doing in the district to try to make sure we are a viable option and an interested option for Paxton students. And then I would also share, as was mentioned earlier, a lot of this money is going to support our students at the PCS, which is a kindergarten school. One of the things that, you know, I would share, if we talked about what's happened in the district, is Paxton Center School has got as many resources as any school in this entire district over the last three years since I've been here. Last year alone, you got three additional teachers at Paxton Center School. Those are more teachers that were at the PCS than any school in the district. And so what we want the Town of Paxton to know is we may be our second smallest town, but in terms of resources and the attention we give to Paxton Center School, it's as high as any place in the district. And so we continue, and we will continue, to try to make sure that that school is outfitted with the same resources of the schools in the district. This budget allows for a couple of things at Paxton Center School. One of them is a related arts position where typically work on STEAM activities. So, you know, you talk about what makes learning interesting for kids, and what do they get more out of it is when they can have to see the things that they're working on, and use their hands to experience it. So it's for a STEAM position that they would get in related arts. And the other position is actually for interventions. And this would be a teacher having to Paxton Center School to work with students who are struggling. For too long in the district, we've waited until kids may need special education services. And by that time, quite honestly, a lot of times don't buy too much, I love you. And so this is a position that would allow a teacher to be working with students in the first and second grade as they're struggling, and get up to the level pretty critical that by third grade, kids can learn and write, have those literacy skills. It actually predicts how they'll be in high school. And so at Paxton Center School, this would be an especially powerful position because your number actually of first and second, first and second grade classrooms, you don't have as many as other district schools. So you can have a person who can not only service kids in first and second grade, but can perform other functions at the school. So I think this can have a great benefit for Paxton Center School.
Do you have a question? Please do, again. A second.
I'm certain, so a couple of questions, just informational questions. One, what determines the amount of the chapter 78, 78, and what causes it to fall down in different years? And then second of all, you present some comparative figures about people from the state foundation. And why is it that Wachusett region is the last of the 13 districts in Central Mass and the lowest of the 25 larger schools?
Now, so I try to take those, and if I miss one, please let me know, and I'll circle that. I'll start with, you know, by the last, how do the other regional districts? You may have seen this on the news, and it definitely was an important point when the state's budget was released, both the government budget and then also from the House, is the state funding for schools is flawed. And so it was a budget system that was developed, I believe, in the 1990s. And so, you know, at that time, what they approximated for the cost of educating students, it's not the same playing field as we have now. And they made adjustments in recent years. They had something called the Student Opportunity Act, which helped benefit small urban and urban schools, which was needed, as I was saying, it was a good thing they did it. However, the money to help support those changes has meant districts such as Wachusett are continually getting less than their share. And I apologize, and I'll be honest with you, right, I did not, in full transparency, the school budget is passed in our four other towns. And so I did not want to waste people's time by doing the full presentation. So I apologize that some of these figures, I want to own, maybe off by a thousand dollars or so, I give them for people, but largely they're accurate. State funding for Wachusett, what they give us in Chapter 70 is approximately, I want to say around $12,000 or so? 13, okay. However, when you look at what they give vocational schools for, for enhancements, DAP gets approximately $20,000. Okay, and I want to say that again. The state says it costs $13,000 to educate a student in Wachusett, and $20,000 to educate a student at DAP. We're talking about similar communities, okay, this is Pax, the centric quote. Except the amount of funding that the state allows vocational schools in comparison to a comprehensive high school or a school system like Wachusett is drastically different. Now, I would concede that it could cost more to educate a student at a vocational school, but I don't know if it's $8,000. And so that's one of the things, and it's very concerning. And it's one of the things that there's been a lot of advocacy, advocacy efforts. And I think members of the select board knows, who actually accompanied our students, asked Ann Hurst and helped testify about our concern about the function of the road and how it needs to be kept. It is something that they committed to looking at, but to be completely transparent, I don't see that being solved, except in another couple of years' time. The other issue that's impacted the district is, are entering into a whole harmless status. Now, whole harmless is something that was created by the state that says that school districts can't be harmed if they have a reduction in the number of students that they have. Now, in Wachusett's case, where we fluctuate between 65,000 and 7,000 students, we had to decrease two years ago, I want to say approximately 50 students. So we lost 50 students out of over 68,000 at the time. And that's what resulted in us having an increase that was approximately two and a half million dollars less than the year before. And so it is something that we're not alone. In fact, right now, this year, two-thirds of the school districts in the state are in whole harmless status, just over Wachusett. However, it's especially harming us, whether it's a regional school district and the district that has so many students. It's not like we're a very small su, uh, very small district, losing hundreds of students year after year. It's two consecutive years of us losing less than 1% of our students. And so we are particularly being harmed by that whole harmless condition. So it's been very frustrating for us to deal with. And it honestly, obviously, you know, very frustrating for the town because then their ass pays for a higher percentage of trying to maintain that, uh, the reasonable budget that's supposed to operate. Do you have any questions, sir? I apologize.
Dennis Dowd, South Street, I just want to know why there's a disconnect between the select board and the fin... Well, I just want to know what disconnect between the finance board and the, uh, okay. Hi, Dennis Dowd, South Street. I just want to know why there's a disconnect between the finance committee and the, uh, select board on this particular article. You know, one approves, one doesn't approve, so if they would address that, please, thank you.
Mr. Mark Love, he's the chairperson of our finance committee. Actually, the finance committee had the benefit of hearing a lot of what's been spoken to here at this annual town meeting on a number of presentations to the finance committee. So we didn't take our votes very lightly. We voted the way we did for a couple of reasons. One, which is, back in October of 2024, the finance committee and the select board held a joint working session to talk about budgets and finances, and in particular, the Wachusett Regional School District budget. And at that particular meeting, we all unanimously agreed to send a letter to the Wachusett Regional School District Administration and the Wachusett Regional School Committee, mentioning that while you have your budget problems, we have our own. And while we need to live within two and a half percent proposition, we're asking you to do the same thing. And the letter spoke to the point of two and a half percent increase of assessment, one year to the next. To my knowledge, I was one of the scientists of those letters. That letter, to my knowledge, it was not responded to, and it was not acknowledged. But what did happen five months later is that the finance committee received an assessment from the Wachusett Regional School Committee that was eight and a half percent higher than the prior year assessment. Not two and a half percent, that would be had requested, not four and a half percent, not six and a half percent, eight and a half percent. And if you look at the particular map on the article yourself, you'll see that it's directed down to eight percent. But eight percent is not sustainable for the town to subsidize. When we have to do that, we have to make up that gap between two and a half percent and eight percent. And as you've seen over the last number of months in our particular finance committee meetings, we've had to cut hours, cut services, deferred maintenance, delayed capital acquisitions. And that's just not the right way to go. During a 10-year period, which we don't see in the article, is that the Wachusett Regional School District budget is $129 million. That is a 59% increase over the last 10 years. At the same time, that enrollment has dropped by 11%. Now, the simple math doesn't work exactly, but if you combine those two, of an increase of budget of 59%, and a drop of enrollment at 11%, it's pretty compelling. And that way, heavily in our decision. We can be all in favor of education, but we can also be opposed to a budget. Because while we all favor education by the superintendent's only mission, student assessment is also down over that same period. And by, again, the only mission of the school committee, it's a three-year lag. We're on, but for a seventh grader who's now reading a fourth grade level. That is not right, and that is not acceptable, and that is not sustainable. Now, it should be noted that we were well aware and well informed that other towns have already passed the school budget. And you only need four to pass, and where the step. But the finance committee still was strong enough and solid enough to send a message on principle to schools, to the other towns. We cannot sustain this particular budget increase every single year. Our own town service to the paper as a result of that, it's got to change. And we wanted our principal to send a message, and hopefully we do.
So the concerns of the finance committee were most part about it. I don't know if I recommend that they were solid enough to vote for recommendation disapproval because the select board certainly was going to make the recommendation that we felt was best for town meeting. And I'll tell you why. You'll notice that the article specifically says to raise and appropriate. We are now in a situation where four of the five towns have already passed the budget, which means we have to pay the bill. This article raises and proclaims some money so that we can pay that bill. If we don't pay the bill, we decide that this article should not pass, we still are going to be made to pay that bill. However, it could be as a result of court action or other action taken by the district. If this were simply a vote to what, whether or not to approve or disapprove of the, uh, of the... of the, uh, of the assessment on the Wachusett School District, the board may have voted differently. I can't say we didn't vote on that. But what we had to do, we voted on raising and appropriate. We have to pay this bill. This article pays the bill. And that's why there's a disconnect between the two.
So I just want to, here's a couple of statements that maybe that aren't accurate, and those ones are correct. First is, I have no idea what study or information Mr. Webb's talking about, about seventh grades, do you even have fourth grade level model earlier that come from? Or whether that's, in fact, I do. What I can tell you, I have, and I will continue to say, is that means that that I don't find or achieve a data to be acceptable, and you need to continue driving forward. That is what we are looking at. I also want to point out that you mentioned the trend in terms of how much your budget has increased. And you'll see this in the presentations, and this was actually what's in the Paxon presentation. The increase in the town budget actually, for all five towns, bears an increase in the Wachusett budget. Your town budget has increased as much as our budget has. So to make a statement as if our spending is out of control, and if it is to provide your budget, the rest of your budget has kept pace. And that thing is not the same as the spending of the school district. So it's unfortunate that that piece of data is not shared as well. What I will say to you is nobody on any of the Select Boards or any of the thin thongs, and we were voted approved by all five Select Boards and any one who were supporting, is that we get one question about any of our appropriations or how this budget was developed. And just because we're completely transparent, we show people where every single dollar is spent. And so if you don't get any questions about how you're spending money, and nobody can point to any of your figures and say, where did you come up with that? Or what did you spend on the voting tours? I think you've done a pretty good job creating your transparent budget. That's what is the, that's what we do. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I want to say something that I didn't want to say, but there were, we're not having to use some of the test boards we're getting. But the reason for that is that the school district was under funding for several years. I gave you shows in our data. I made something of a crack in a school committee meeting that before Jim arrived, the school district would run a little lemonade stand and learn a little business. We didn't know where the money was going for that. That has changed substantially over the past three or four years. We now know where every dollar is going, how it's spent. And we're ensuring that it spends in the best interest of the students. We expect the test boards to get that because they're not going. There's just one other thing. I actually took exactly the back of the book, that all the budgets for the past 25 years. And the school budget for last year is actually the exact same percentage of the town budget as it was 20 years ago. So yes, it's gone up, but the town budget has also gone up. And over 20 years, they've gone up.
I can just speak up. Jeremy Richard, A. Birchwood Road. Yes, over the last 20 years, the town budgets have gone up at the same rate as the school budget. But the towns' population combined, all five towns, has seen almost double-digit growth, while the schools' enrollment has seen a double-digit decline. So if you're going to use the figures, tell the truth, okay? The budgets did rise the same. Town population grew, school population dropped.
Is there a motion to move the question? Is there a say? Okay, this is not debatable. Takes two of his majorities to cut off debates. So you're voting now to say, you're further now? To have, we vote yes, if you want to keep going, just vote no. Ready to vote now? Five seconds. And voting is. Right, it's the yeses, which is the vote to cut off debate, we're under 23, no, 27, extension to one. That means that no vote debate, we're going to vote now on a motion of Article 18, figure 10. Right, so all of you agree to vote, so if you're in favor of this project, vote yes. If you're against, vote no. And remember what you control, which is that this budget already nomination was. Sorry? All right, ready? Vote now. Five seconds. And voting is. Yeses were 110, no's 15, extension to one, if this motion is passed. Article 18 has to do with establishing a capital stabilization fund for the Wachusett Regional School District. It's a motion of Article 18. Mr. Westman?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Wachusett Regional School District to establish a capital stabilization fund according to Chapter 71, Section 163.5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, starting July 1st, 2025. It's your second?
Second.
Which has been made the second, recommendation of the Select Board, recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Take no action.
Is to take no action. Recommendation of the Capital Stability Committee. Are there any questions or discussion on this issue? It is one quite simply. This vote is quite simply drawn, you're ready to vote now? Five seconds. And this vote is. This vote, the yeses were 94, the no's were 39, extension to six, I declare this motion is passed. And now we come to the town budget vote on Article 19, the motion on Article 19. This is being voted.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,278,209 and to further appropriate from the annual receipts reserved for appropriation account the sum of $490,000. And to further appropriate from free cash, the sum of $500,000. And to further transfer from operating stabilization, the sum of $43,907, for a total appropriation of $7,312,116. And that such sum be expended for such purposes under the direction of the respective town officers or its committees to depraise the necessary annual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025. And specifically, for any and all expenses shown in the budget document at QMOR for Article 19, labeled FY26, those that details excluding amounts very allocated for Wachusett assessments and for vocational school assessments.
It's your second?
Second.
Recommendation of the Select Board, Bureau of Office for Approval, recommendation of Finance Committee. Approval, this is approved. Any discussion or any questions? Yes, sir. Hold on, I'm going to bring my.
Up 232 West Street, I have an amendment to offer.
Okay. Can you tell us where it is?
I have it written.
Eric, can I ask you to just spend a moment with the town council right here? Put this in, but it's not going to affect the motion. Everybody just hang those for a couple minutes.
Do people have questions?
Okay, we're still working on that motion, but I understand that the wording of the motion, the original motion presented is not that what it's intended. So it's a bit hard to draw the actual motion.
All right, I apologize if I didn't say it again. All right. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,278,209 and to further appropriate from the annual receipts reserved for appropriation account the sum of $490,000. And to further appropriate from free cash, the sum of $500,000. And to further transfer from operating stabilization, the sum of $43,907, for a total appropriation of $7,312,116. And that such sum be expended for such purposes under the direction of the respective town officers, boards, and committees to depraise the necessary annual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025. And specifically, for any and all expenses shown in the portion of the warrant for Article 19, labeled FY26, proposed budget.
It's your second, if anyone can move. Okay, we'll move the voice here, if you're ready to sit down.
It's going fast forward, isn't it?
No, I know. It's going fast forward. I don't dare.
No, the 490s were the, my, what I put into the budget.
Well, that's some things that you had to have.
Oh, I thought you meant 490s.
Of course, it is. I just read along.
Well, we're working on that, writing the motion to amend. There's very discussion on the pending motion that Abbott has been pending. Any questions on this?
Mr. Williams. Maybe a portion of your show, $427,000, the works collection. Thank everyone for the works collection. But it's not.
He's asking the question. He's asking.
I'm going to use that. Please keep it down.
No masks.
You know, the public is very, very sensitive. You know, the public is very good at acting, and Heather will go like, you have to answer the machine type.
Well, I, yeah, I just had a comment. Um, the only difference, Julie, in what you read the first time was ambulance of 450, the receipts, and you changed it to 490. No, what was the other mod? Just explain what the differences were as we're waiting.
The differences have to do with what the reference of specific expenditures, the original motion referred to, an attachment to the warrant as opposed to this, which is caught in the warrant. This, this, this is a little boring idea, it's on the screen.
Okay. All right. So the numbers, the numbers didn't change? Okay, I just.
The numbers didn't change. I think they're the same. Do there's any questions about that, or are you ever part of the, uh, the assessment? Just me?
Hi, Emily Orchuck, uh, 8 Bell Arbor Drive. Um, I have a few questions, maybe. First, for the Board of Assessors Committee compensation, is that going down to zero? So, I guess I have a follow-up question on that because they're required to take a test in order to be on that, correct? So are we covering the cost of their test? Like, is there any incentive for them to stay on the Board of Assessors for us?
So there is a number of committees in town that have similar requirements, um, and, uh, there's a lot of time allocated by committee members. Unfortunately, due to our current budget situation, most of those committees, that all of those committees at this point have chosen to give up their compensation, and so it's just a matter of, um, making everybody miss.
Thank you. Um, and then I had a second question, um, as well. So it looks like multiple positions had the finance committee approve, um, higher than what they had requested for the year, but then the treasurer collector, I know the hours reduced, I believe, but, um, it seems like a disproportionate, uh, impact because the assistant treasurer was also taken away.
Unfortunately, the slide that you see up there is, uh, is not a complete one, there's another column, but the town, uh, treasurer collector actually had their budget reduced by 18.25%, which was actually a memorandum that went out from the town administrators to all departments, that that was the level of reduction that was needed in order to retain a balanced budget. So the position obviously is retained, the hours have been slightly modified to accommodate the 18.25 reduction that we're looking to retain from all the departments.
If, if you have any questions, or if you also have a question about this, is what you're going to add?
Thank you. Uh, Rick Bedard, 8 Pierce Circle, just a question regarding the 490,000 from the ambulance receipts, the reserve account for that. Article 15 earlier, I think we spent some ambulance reserve funds for the ambulance itself, so I guess I'm just wondering, would those two combined, uh, what the total would be? And then do you feel confident, I guess the fire chief, that we're going to have enough revenue, uh, to come in, to come in to cover both of those things?
Yeah, Rick, good question. Uh, so the 490,000 that was appropriated, or will be appropriated right now, that's our contribution from ambulance receipts reserved for the year to pay our paramedics and offset, uh, we, we had to actually increase it by 90,000 from what we would normally put in for, uh, to just help out the operating budget for the town. The 450,000 we have not spent yet, that won't be spent, uh, the first lease payment won't be made for another two and a half to almost three years, and that lease payment will be anywhere between probably 50,000 and 79,000. So, so there will be enough as we get moving forward, uh, to start tucking things away next year in the account, so.
Colleen Sullivan, 92 Richards Ave. First, a question, um, regarding the police bu, uh, police department budget. Does that budget figure include the funds received from Anna Maria to pay, or is that just the figure that the town appropriates to pay for the police department?
The amount collected is, uh, how much should just be accounted for by the county for that.
Thank you. Um, with that in mind, my question really is, is there a reason that with the 350,000 approximately that comes from Anna Maria, bringing the police department budget to about one and a half million dollars of a 7.8 million dol, or a 7.6 million dollar budget, once you include the funds from Anna Maria? That's about a 16% section of the budget for the town, which to me, based on the population of our town and the amount of crime that does not occur here, um, feels like a very large proportion of the funds that we are putting in to the police department, um, specifically considering the decrease in other departments of approximately 18%, as Mr. Love said before, where this is a decrease of approximately 20,000 dollars from last year. Um, is there a reason why that decrease has not been proportionately reflected across all departments? And is there a reason why supplies has increased from 40,000 to 55,000 dollars for this year?
All right, we give it a shot. Um, all right, so in terms of the amount that Anna Maria pays for the police department, is the number actually longer than 700,000 dollars? However, that is a fee per service fund, so that amounts of money to the police department that helps staff Anna Maria in public, um, and provide oversight of that staff at Anna Maria in public, that will not be available to the town in any other way. Um, in terms of a disproportionate or disproportionate increase or decrease to the police department budget, that budget overall suffered a 19% decrease, which is certainly different than the 18 and a quarter percent, uh, decrease that we saw in other departments. We did see some departments that were decreased to 100%, some basically decreased to 100%. Anyway, um, in terms of the police department, the problem we're running into is that if we decreased to 18 and a quarter percent, the chief explained that that amount would ensure that we do not have more police coverage in town. And so the recommendations across the board, we had a meeting of the select board and the finance committee, several meetings of the finance and the select board, um, in order to try to balance the budget, a decision was made to infuse some more funds into the police department to make sure that we can see police coverage. Um, I know you mentioned, uh, something about the amount of crime that we don't see here attached in. Um, I applaud you for saying that, but I'm not sure it's accurate. Um, and the reason is that we don't hear about a lot of this crime, okay? So, you know, police department does a amazing job of making sure that the crime stays put, of making sure that it's addressed early and being proactive out on the streets in order to keep us all safe. Um, they maintain a specific presence in town to make sure that the bad guys stay out. Um, and so it's because of their proactive work that we're seeing around town that we don't have a lot of crime.
May I ask a follow-up question? I'll wait for Roger to be done.
Can I respond to that question, Mr. Bedard? You actually asked a very good question, and, uh, I need to be careful because the finance committee has approved the police budget as you see above. But with regard to the question that you raised in terms of the, the town contribution and the Anna Maria budget, I would pledge to you that the finance committee wants to continue the dialogue to see if there's another better way to make that work more effectively for the town. But for this evening and the annual town meeting and the budget we have before you, we're not prepared to, to do that, but only to guarantee you that it's on a to-do list to work on very closely so that we have a better answer for FY26.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask a follow-up question?
Number, I think, number one.
Okay.
The adjournment of the motion to amend. Come up here and tell us who you are and who you're with, and I'll read your motions.
Carl, 1232 West Street. So I move to amend the Article 19 at the end. I want to add the following text. To further raise and appropriate an additional sum of 550,098 contingent upon a clock two and a half override to fund the following. Line 1122, an additional 7,046. Line 1123, an additional 56,577. Line 1129, an additional 644 dollars. Line 1132, an additional 250 dollars. Line 1141, an additional 19,365. Line 1145, an additional 18,558. Line 1151, an additional 1,093. Line 1155, an additional 11,272. Line 1161, an additional 10,674. Line 1162, an additional 16,292. Line 1171, an additional 82. Line 1192, an additional 4,896. Line 1210, an additional 28,508. Line 1220, an additional 70,700. Line 1241, an additional 2,667. Line 1421, an additional 37,099. Line 1423, an additional 1,010. Line 1491, an additional 5,454. Line 1510, an additional 3,236. Line 1541, an additional 10,377. Line 1610, an additional 33,916. Line 1710, an additional 1,784. Line 1711, an additional 10,441. Line 1750, an additional 16,153. Line 1751, an additional 2,700. Line 1709, an additional 3,515. Line 1910, an additional 118,780. And line 1915, an additional 56,895, for a total of 550,098.
Sorry.
The motion is being seconded. Yep. Motion is being seconded. Is there a recommendation from the select board?
No recommendation.
No recommendation. There is a recommendation from the finance committee?
No recommendation, no recommendation.
Is there any discussion, sir? We'll just leave it.
Briefly, this, what this motion does is it calls for an override of 550,000 with the use of fund all of our town departments at fiscal 25 levels to this past year plus an additional 0.5%. So that's what all of those numbers were, with the exception of all of the lines that have already been identified as by the finance committee as being above a 0.5% increase. Any line that I didn't read, finance committee had identified it as an increase, so I think those increases will stay in place. I chose to make this motion because I think that the cuts that are proposed and we kind of work our way into are just, it's just too much, and when people can say that we have a tax spending problem, I choose to look at it, it's really an investment. This is how we invest in our town, how we invest in our safety, how we invest in our quality of life, our recreation, all the great things that make taxes brilliant. There are 22 towns in Massachusetts that have a population between 4,500 and 5,500. Out of those 22, we're second from the bottom, second from the bottom in how we invest in our town. This doesn't really help it that much, but this just keeps us from falling further down. And so even at a 0.5% increase, it's still really a cut to the departments, but it's like cutting with a scalpel and not cutting with a hatchet. And so gives our, and it's, it's half with the, half with the override of those earlier as well, so it's not quite the impact, but it gives our top towns, our town departments a chance for one more year to, to take a harder look and maybe make, you know, better make some tougher decisions going forward, not have to make this hard decision right now. And again, I think it's a smaller increase, but I think it's an increase worth making for us right now as we try to move forward.
All right, so just I want to be, uh, I'm going to go to you.
No worries. I'm patient.
There you go. Okay, I just want to be clear that I'm not going to read the whole thing over here. I want to be clear that the beginning part of the said that the motion is to amend this budget, which is for you now by further raising, to raise and appropriate an additional sum of 550,098 dollars contingent upon a clock two and a half override, and then that pass, the money will go to where it needs specified. That's the point of this motion.
Glenn Sullivan, 92 Richards Ave. Uh, first off, I applaud the citizen for the motion. I think that, uh, he's got the best intentions. I wish that it had been able to have been made as a ci, as a citizen's motion before the warrant was published, because I would love to have seen this as a separate warrant article to be voted on, because I worry about the answer to the question I'm going to ask. If we pass this motion and the override fails, are we stuck with no budget? Or are we at the budget that was passed, that was proposed beforehand? Because we will not have a chance to vote on the current proposed budget if that's the case. If we pass this, uh, potential amendment and, and pass the, the amended article, and then the override fails, now where are we? Which is why I would, I would, I would, I would love, I, I fully support what you're trying to do, man, but if this had been a second article after the first one that said, "And if we can pass an override, let's modify the budget we just passed to be the following," I think we would have had a better chance of continuing to run as a town without having to run a special town meeting to come back and pass this budget again.
Could you please say something, please, in the question box?
I'm going to give this a shot. If you're not going to be Brian, if you're God, or you have no idea what you're talking about. But my understanding is that this budget could be passed. It would not be a balanced budget yet. Now, we checked into this prior to the meeting. We have to have a balanced budget in order to set the tax rate down. So, and again, I don't know if you're Brian, everyone's a lot, not looking down.
That's, that's fine.
But my understanding is that if we were to pass the amendment, we would then have to call a special election, okay? And I've already asked our town clerk to stop researching how far out that would be, because the two and a half, as you know, a two and a half override has to pass at both town meeting and the special, and election. So if it failed that election, we would then have to come back to a special town meeting to pass this budget to have a balanced budget in time for us to set our tax rate that's long, so that's why I said, well, what are these?
So, so actually, actually, now that I.
Why don't we, Brian, come up here?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Mr. Paul, he's a town congressman. Thank you. So, um, the amendment on the floor would add an additional amount that the town's raising and appropriating that would only take effect upon passage of an override. Um, because this is an annual town meeting, that override will have to take Because this is an annual town meeting, that override will have to take place by September 15th, otherwise it's a null. But whether the override election is called or that ballot question fails, the only thing that's contingent upon that override ballot question is this additional amount. The prior portion, that's the main motion on the floor right now, would take effect regardless of an override because it's under the two-and-a-half cap. And so we'll be able to open town hall on July 1st with this override question still being held.
And the longer I stood here, the more I remembered my father teaching me that you can always spend less than what was approved, but you can't spend more than what was approved. So I guess that makes sense. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Rundstrom, 29 Camp Street. I support this amendment fully. I think, for one thing, in the override that failed early in the spring, about $400,000 of it was for the school budget. The school budget passed in the other four towns, therefore we have to pay that money. I think it's a no-brainer to put that money on an override. And I think the town will support it because we have to pay it no matter what we do. So I just think this is the right thing to do. Obviously, I support the school budget, but we shouldn't be balancing... We shouldn't be passing the school budget at the cost of all the other departments in the town. We need to make the other departments whole, and I fully support this motion.
Sarah Ford, 299 Richards Ave. You guys answered all my questions. I just didn't want to go sit down and look weird. So thanks.
Nice to see you. Thank you. Okay. Remember now, we're debating the motion to amend at the moment, not the layout of the motion. Yes, please go ahead.
Becky Sullivan, 92 Richards Ave. I'm wondering how the added portion to the library budget will affect the library accreditation. Does anybody know the answer to that? The accreditation of the library.
If you would speak to that. Do you have any library trustees here?
Pam Schenover, Library Director. It will get us closer to certification. The only guaranteed certification amount is $207,178. We're not near that. It was approved in April. We know that has sailed. We will be... We won't be disproportionately cut, so that's a good thing. We still have to get a waiver for the MAR and for the book budget, but we'll be much closer. I can't guarantee one way or the other what the MBLC will do, but it will certainly help us keep our hours and operate at the level that we know Paxton appreciates. Thank you.
All right. Remember now, we're talking about a motion to amend by voting for an override vote of $550,000. Any more discussion about that? Okay. So the friendly amendment has been proposed to change the...
Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, Town Administrator. So what happens sometimes in Excel sheets is they're not always friendly when you get rid of decimals. This is why last year we had to come back for a dollar, I think, in correction. So same thing here. When the motion maker had put this all together, I think what happened was he did a calculation off of a prior number, and then he hid the decimal points. And sometimes if you don't do round up or nothing, it's silly. But we just need a clarification that the total number, everything as stated was correct, but the bottom line should be 550,100 would be the increase for the override.
We accept that as a friendly amendment, so if you override with $550,000. Okay. So that's the motion to amend. That's the force now. Any more discussion on just this motion to amend? Yes, we're waiting to hear. Yeah, number like 18, like a circle. Can you just clarify this process? I'm a little confused. How we're going to balance by July 1st or the 2nd?
Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, Town Administrator. So we do have... The first part of the article remains the same, the motion. We do have a balanced budget. This is to say, in the event that we have a successful override for the amount of $550,100, the amount increased would be as outlined this evening.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Sarah Ford, 299 Richards Ave. Hey Laurie, if we have to have another election, I'll do that one for free.
Can anybody else?
Dave Johnson from Richards Ave. I have a question about... Although I anticipate voting yes on this amendment, but what, if any calculation has been made or could be made, you know, quick run it. What would this effect have on our property taxes?
Okay. The question is, would the passage of the override vote have your property taxes? Is that the point?
Yes.
Very good. Who wants to answer that? Okay. This whole line of this rules can figure that out.
She's very good at that.
All right. So for $550,100 override, that would be the... For the average single-family assessed home of $506,668, that would be an impact of $324.27.
Is there a percentage?
That would be an annual increase of 324.27. I don't have a percentage.
Alan Stiles, my name, 16 Arlington Circle, Paxton. I'm very concerned about the amendment. I think that the town... I know the town voted no when there was an election about the override. And a tremendous amount of work was done by the finance committee and our select board to put this all together. We spent several hours here voting on it. And now it appears that there's a last-minute amendment. And I just think the optics of that and the fact of doing it really does... It just doesn't feel good. And I appreciate the work that you did in constructing the amendment, but with all of the... All of the meetings that have taken place, the Zoom meetings and the dialogue and so forth and so on, I just... I can't... I can't support the amendment.
Any other comments on the motion to amend?
So anybody familiar with investing or the rule of 72? It's basically you divide the interest rate, so like 10 percent interest rate, and what do you invest? You divide 72 by 10, and that's going to give you your return. How long can it take to double your money? It can also be done backwards with taxes. So two-and-a-half override would be now is 28 years is what our taxes double. So if you have family, if you have children, own your house, they're getting the double tax that you're paying right now. That's seven-and-a-half percent that we just did right here. Your tax will double in nine years. So I just want to point that out, that it's everybody's inflation and grocery prices and everything else. And this is part of that whole reason because you go up a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, but it compounds. And so that's all I really have to say. You just have to think about that. How many people in here got several percent raise coming here? You know? So if you're getting the less raise and you're increasing your taxes, you're lowering your standard, really. If you understand that.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment or question on the motion to amend? All right. I heard a motion to move the question. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. There's no debate on this motion. The motion requires a truth, there's a charge to pass. So if you vote yes, that means you've heard enough and you want to proceed to vote on the motion to amend. So if you're ready to vote, then vote now. Five seconds. And voting is closed now. On this motion to terminate debate, the yeses are 137, the nos are 12, the extension is a 1. That means we've voted for two percent of the charge. So that ends the debate on the motion to amend. We're now going to vote on that motion to amend. This requires a simple majority. Again, in substance, this is a motion to have an override of $550,100. If that money could pass, if I vote no, I vote to follow the budget as specified on the motion part. So if you're in favor of that, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Then vote no. Five seconds. And voting is closed now. On this motion, this is our 87, the nos are 58, the extension is zero. And I declare that the motion to amend has passed. Now, we're going to move on to the main motion, which is the motion to approve the budget as set forth in the warrant and as amended by the motion we just adopted. So this requires us... I'm sorry. Is there any more discussion? I have to go to a right now.
When I said seven-and-a-half percent, the town budget is going up by seven-and-a-half percent. It already includes a two-and-a-half percent increase in your tax rate. The additional increase is only to 2.7 percent, not an additional seven-and-a-half percent. I don't want to screw everybody up. The budget went up by seven-and-a-half percent, but it was already going up by two-and-a-half percent.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Anybody else want to correct anything that Dave said? Okay. I think we're getting close to it. Is there any... The floor is now open to any more discussion about the main motion as amended. Any more discussion about that? Questions? Yes.
Martha Axton from 268 Richards Ave. Mr. Wheeler had a question about the trash, the waste collection, and I don't think that that was answered.
So we all pay for our trash through our bill, right? The trash key is in there. The trash key that we pay is intended to exactly offset the amount that we have to pay to Pellegrino and for our tipping costs, which is the $400,000 number that was previously referenced. That amount is reflected in our bills.
Yes, sir. That is your question? All right. Who wants to ask a question? Mr. Wheeler.
I can ask a personal question, Dave.
Okay. So has your question been answered, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions or comments about the budget topic, which you have been waiting to move on? Yes, sir.
Chuck Putney, Two Ledger Road. I just wanted to comment. I think there was a concern about where it seemed like a last-minute, not feel-good thing. I just want to say, I love tradition of town meeting. And I think this is exactly what town meeting is about. And it's not going to be permanent. It's not... It's not going to... The amendment isn't going to become part of this unless the town votes on it. So I think this is transparent. I don't... I don't... I just want to state that this feels very good to me. And I want to remind people that, again, this town meeting doesn't determine it. So please come out and vote. Please encourage your neighbors to come out and vote. Please, please, please. So I know we're all frustrated by the number of people that... The lack of people that vote. So let's encourage people to vote. It has a real impact. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment or question about the Article 19 motion? Last chance. Okay. This vote requires a simple majority. So if you're in favor of the budget with the amended... With the amendment that we've passed already, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. This requires a simple majority. If you're ready, then vote no.
Point of the big story is, is it involves a clock two-and-a-half override? Is it a simple majority?
It is a simple majority. Any other question before I go ahead? All right. Voting is open. Vote now. Five seconds. Okay. I'm sorry. The voting is closed now. And on this vote, there are 170 yeses, 42 nos, two extensions. I declare that our 193 as amended has been passed. I complete my business here. Before we... Before we ask the motion to dissolve, I just want to announce that I do not intend to run for reelection next spring when my term ends. And so for those of you who think you can play better job than that guy up here, here's your chance to prove it. We have a ticket in the town caucus in March and get the nominee to take papers up in the clerk's office and then money for office debate. So you'll best of luck in the end. Stay with anyone who's interested in it. Mr. Moderator, motion to dissolve. Motion to dissolve is on the second. Any discussion? All of us in favor? All in the polls say no. Are you in favor of this motion? This being amended to dissolve?